Today is Thursday, September 27th, 2018. The time is now 3:30 PM. This special call meeting of the Smith County Commissioners' Court, held in joint session with the Tyler City Council, is now called to order. I declare that a quorum is present, that all legal notices have been posted, and the court is duly called. Mayor?
Thank you. On behalf of the mayor of the city of Tyler, I call the meeting to order for the city of Tyler, and appreciate you all being here.
This afternoon, Commissioner Jeff War was going to lead us in our invocation, following Commissioner War. City Councilman Admiral will lead us in the pledges of allegiance. Would you please stand?
Let us go to the Lord in prayer. Lord, we just lift up these bodies today and all the employees that we represent. Or we just are humbled that we get to come together and ask for your mercy and your guidance. Lord, the scriptures tell us that there's wisdom in asking the multitude for good guidance, Lord, and we pray that we get that, and thank you for the opportunity to serve. Lord, let us remember there's more that unites us than that divides us, and we ask all these things in Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Nation takes its way. All who live in Texas is right. I pledge allegiance to Texas. One state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you so much for being here this afternoon. We are pleased that you've all decided to join us during this busy work week. We know you have other things you could be doing, but thank you for being here this morning. We want to first start out with a few welcome remarks by Mayor Martin Hines, who could not be here this morning but wanted to send a video greeting. So we're going to start out with some remarks from him, and then I'll follow that as well, and then we'll get some introductions from all the council members and commissioners that are here today.
Good afternoon. Michelle and I are currently at Isabel Soccer Practice in Florida, so I'm very sorry that I'm unable to be with you this afternoon. May I be bold enough to say that this is a historic moment for the city of Tyler and for Smith County. I know we've met before as a council and a commissioners' court, but today, let's make this something special and important for our constituents. Fifty percent of the county's population is located in Tyler, and I do know that both populations, Smith County and the city of Tyler, are both growing. So let us pledge together that today will be the day that we really decide that we're going to bind together and work in the best interest of our constituents. They request of us that the items that we do overlap on, that we provide efficient, effective services to them. I want to thank each and every one of you for the volunteer hours that you give to this community to make it a better place, and I sure wish I could be with you on this very important day.
Mayor Hines, I'd like to welcome you here this afternoon as well. This really is a historic opportunity to get together. As far as I know, this has not happened in decades where the city council in the city of Tyler and the commissioners' court have actually sat down at the same table for a joint meeting. It is historic. Thank you to Mayor Hines for his kind remarks and his welcome address. We are sorry that he could not attend today, but appreciate his support of this community and his years of volunteer service as the mayor of the city of Tyler. Welcome also to each of the members of the Tyler City Council, who are seated around this table, to Mayor Pro Tem Sellers for running this meeting today on behalf of the city, to City Manager Ed Bresser, who's here as well, and to the city staff who are in attendance today. We welcome you to Smith County and offer our greetings to you, and we hope that you leave here today feeling welcomed and appreciated for the work that each of you have done and do daily for the districts and the city of Tyler as a whole. Genuinely, let me say to begin, thank you for your service. I also want to welcome this morning those in attendance, both here and watching the livestream down at the hub, who have joined us in support of the measures being presented today and in support of our unified goal of collaborative economic development. Present with us today are pioneers and innovators, both past, present, and future in business; economic development leaders and experts; leaders of our major secondary and post-secondary educational institutions; community and governmental leaders from many of the other municipalities in the county, which says a tremendous amount; nonprofit volunteers who have toed for hours to serve their various communities and the causes that they hold so dearly; members of the county and city staff who dedicate each day to work diligently on behalf of their constituents; and those looking to become involved in a meaningful way to transform our community and our county. Thank you to all who are here, and thank you for your dedication to fulfill that calling, that individual calling that God has placed on each of your lives, a calling that is unique to only you. During this historic meeting today, I will later introduce my name. Both special guests are seated on this front row. These are the individuals that I've invited to participate as the core working group of our county seat coalition, which we will talk about in Agenda Item Number One. But for now, let me just say welcome to all of you on this front row as a group and say thank you for your willingness to serve on this coalition. For those here seated around this table, what you're in here in the galley, what you're going to see is to occur is two separate governing bodies acting in tandem, but each taking separate action along the way as a body as we move through each other's agenda. By way of procedure, we will have a unified time of discussion and debate, followed by a separate call for a motion, second, and a vote for the commissioners and the city council, each one of us needing to take our own vote. But before we do that, let me address why I think today is significant. Let me give you some reasons why I think that this is truly historic here today. First, relationships matter. The interpersonal relationships of the leaders of this community, the city of Tyler, the county commissioners' court, those that are seated here as coalition, those that are in the audience, those relationships matter. They matter because we are and we will be faced with challenging issues to overcome, and to solve those issues, we must be able to relate to one another, to understand our differing perspectives, and not be deterred or dissuaded from solving an issue together simply because of personalities or perceptions. We can do this better when our relationships are strong. Second, direct communication matters. I have found that in my marriage, my wife and I can only work through the toughest of challenges through communication and partnership. I'm sure you've found that to be true as well in your relationships. Likewise, our communities are uniquely faced with tough challenges. Oftentimes, those challenges overlap and necessitate joint action and joint solutions. But if we do not consistently communicate with one another, the best solutions for this community will be missed. We must communicate directly and consistently to identify issues, determine the best solutions, and act decisively. Third, our citizens and our communities demand and deserve that we work together. There is no question about this, and this is rightfully so. All of the citizens of Smith County are impacted by the decisions that are made at the Tyler City Council, and likewise, all of the citizens of the city of Tyler are impacted by the decisions made by the commissioners' court. Whether you live inside or outside, there really is no barrier or insulation from either body. As a result, our citizens want us to work together to ensure that we do not race in different directions. We do not spend money twice for providing the same service, and we do not fail to share the best practices and ideas with one another. Fourth, we are here because a rising tide lifts all boats. I realize that that sounds a little cliched, but oftentimes, what happens is that we, as elected officials, regress into the protectionary world of our individual precincts or districts or even political parties. By doing so, however, we often miss the bigger picture, and we miss meaningful opportunities to make a long-term positive impact for all of our constituencies. Our goals for this community as a whole and each of our electorate are not mutually exclusive, especially when it comes to the economic development of the core center of the county seat, a place that should thrive with all facets of life, commerce, government, and justice. It gives me lots of hope to look around this table at the men and women seated here, because I know that each of you understands these issues, and I know that each of you have proven yourselves to be true servants of this community many times at great individual cost. So let us now look to the future together. Again, let me say welcome to those that are at the table. I look forward to our discussion today, and I look forward to partnering with each of you and these coalition members as we go forward. Now, let me turn the microphone over to each of you to introduce yourselves, remind everyone here in attendance who you are, who you represent, and provide a short greeting. I tell you who, I'm going to start with Councilman Westbrook. You're our visiting, our visitors here. What I just mentioned to you all is to make sure to get close to the microphone and hit the button that says "push" and see that green light that's on. That'll give you great resonance, so welcome.
Great. Thank you, Judge. Thank you, commissioners, and thank you, Madam Mayor. Appreciate everything. I'm City Councilman Bob Westbrook, and my district is Fifth Street South and Paloxi East. So I have that southeast quadrant of the city that encompasses UT Tyler, the Woods, other neighborhoods there in the area. My constituency are actually, when you talk about tax dollars, I have the second highest average per home and land values in the city. And I also, my district encompasses the single largest voting block in the Woods subdivision. So I'm in the end of my first term. I come up for reelection in May, and it has been quite a journey, but this is really a tremendous opportunity, and I'm excited to be here this evening. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips.
I'm Commissioner Terry Phillips. I'm Commissioner for Precinct Three, and just to let everyone know that, you know, like Bob did, that what it covers, it's everything north of I-20 to Lavender Road. Not everything, there's a little bitty sliver, sorry, Commissioner Hampton. I mean tiny. But basically, everything north of I-20, county line to county line. I share the woods with Bob, and everything from basically 64 to Lavender Road north of there, and then a big portion, Fifth Street, Front Street, Broadway to the Loop. So it's the biggest landmass area of any of the commissioners, and that is the area that I serve. And I have the most roads of any commissioner, so...
Councilman McGee.
My name is Broderick McGee, and I'm the District Two Representative for the city of Tyler. I've only been in office for about four months, so I don't know where all my locations are. I'm still trying to learn. I just know mostly west of the west part of Tyler and some parts of north Tyler. I get some parts of the Rose Garden District, and so it's a, I don't know who cut those lines, but I went driving one day and I'm thinking, okay, I'm going to figure out where this ends. And I think I ended up in East District before I knew it. But I'm having an awesome time. Like I said, I've only been elected for four months now and still learning the processes. And I'm so thankful to see this come to fruition today, because I think me and you actually talked about maybe this early before I even got elected, that this would be awesome to have the city and the county to come together and work together to try to find some common grounds that we can work on. So I'm just excited to be a part of it.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner War.
Judge, my name is Jeff War. I represent Precinct One, County Commissioner Precinct One, which is out past the airport, out to the county line, everything kind of south, Flint, Gresham, Bullard, Noonday, takes in Old Bullard Road, and some of our high-traffic areas in Tyler. So I, Linda and I share those calls, have Holly Tree, and actually cross over 69, and then follow the ways, then come up into downtown. I think this is the first time that the commissioners' court has a majority of people who have been on the Tyler City Council in the past. So Commissioner Hampton and I served twenty-plus years ago on the city council, so it's wonderful to be here and get to be a part of this. So thank you very much.
Mayor?
Thank you. This is the first time I've been called mayor. I've been mayor pro tem for three months now, and the mayor, the real mayor hasn't been out of town, so I'm happy to be here. My name is Linda Sellers. I'm serving my fourth year on city council, and my district is District One, that is between South Broadway and Old Jacksonville, comes up to the Bergfield Shopping Center. So I think it's a wonderful idea for us to work together. It's something that the city's needed for a long time, and so we look forward to working with you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Nix.
My name is John Nix, and I am in the middle of my sixth year on city council. My district is long and narrow. It starts about Texas Spine and Joint Hospital and is roughly bordered by Broadway and Paloxi and goes all the way south of 49.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Moore.
Evening. My name is Ed Moore. I'm the county commissioner, county. I'm here county. I'm City Councilman for Council District Number Three, which is the northwest district. Basically, it starts on the west end of Front Street by the Andrews Center and goes west down 31, then it cuts across north, all the way back to, I guess, 69 in the loop. I'm happy to be here, because this is an historic occasion. We're here because the people in this room make Tyler, in my opinion. And I'm just thankful for the county and the seated to come together and talk about issues that we both have in common. So God bless this session, and God bless Tyler, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Commissioner Nix.
Terry Nix, no relation to John. I'm sure he gets asked the same thing. I'm Commissioner Precinct Two. I pretty well cover the south, 64, Fifth Street, and I tell everybody, kind of east of Broadway, there is some jag legs. Represent the great cities of Troop, White House, AR, Bartha Overton, and honored to be here and glad to be here.
Great. Thank you, Councilman Warren.
Good afternoon. My name's Don Warren, and I represent District Four, and that takes in the Isaiah District, east and west of Broadway, the Brick Street area. It also goes and takes in TJC, ETMC, Arden, UT Health East. I'm not really sure what the name is, but it also takes in all the way over to Charleston Park, up to Dellic, takes in Christus Mother Francis. It's a very diverse area. As a matter of fact, it's forty-five percent white, thirty-seven percent Hispanic, and eighteen percent African-American. And I remember the day, or a couple days after I got elected, Commissioner Hampton looked at me and she said, "Don, don't forget about people on the east side." And I remember it like it was yesterday, and I really listened to her, and I appreciated what she said to me, because it's very easy just to get caught up and talk to people where you live, but it's really encouraging and fun to reach out and get out of your comfort zone and meet new people. So thank you for that.
Commissioner Hampton.
I am Commissioner Joanne Hampton. I represent Precinct Four, which encompasses Councilmember District Two and Councilmember District Three, all the way to the Van Zall County Line up to I-20. I've been serving in county government for the last fifteen years. I'm a prior city council member, and I will tell you that this was a dream back in the 1990s, when we went to Charlotte Mecklenburg to see what they were doing and how the city and the county could work together. So to see us sit around this table today is really awesome, Judge, and we appreciate you for doing this, and I just say welcome to all of you.
Thank you, Commissioner Hampton, and thank you all for those introductions. We're going to call Agenda Item Number One on the agenda today. For the commissioners' court, let me call, request that commissioners' court consider and take necessary action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding downtown development efforts as reflected in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan and the creation of a county seat coalition. Mayor?
I request a motion for the city of Tyler to consider and take necessary action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding downtown development efforts as reflected in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan and the creation of a county seat coalition.
Now that those agenda items have been called, permit me a few minutes to present a PowerPoint presentation on the county seat coalition, and this is where I also want to, during this presentation, introduce you to those core working members that are seated in this front row. And core working members, I'm going to tell you, when I get to that point, I've already alerted Phil Burks, I'm going to ask you to follow him and come up to the front and line up here behind us. We want to make sure to recognize you here this morning for your efforts now and in the future, and also be able to take a nice photograph. So at that point, I'll call you up one by one and introduce you. So thank you again for being here. So the county seat coalition is really what's at issue for Agenda Item Number One. This coalition really started as a discussion point probably eight months ago, I believe, maybe nine months ago now. Ed Bresser and I sat down and just in a conversation began talking about some of the things that had been happening downtown and some of the moving pieces that were going on, and how we could take the moving pieces and get them all moving in the same direction, and make sure that we had some unified effort and unified discussion, and really create a hub so that we could have the same vision throughout the organizations and participants and individuals and institutions that are interested in economic development downtown. In the past, many of you know that the city of Tyler has infused many millions of dollars into downtown revitalization efforts. They've, in fact, most recently, over eight million dollars for downtown parking garage, but before that, many other efforts, including the development of Tyler First Comprehensive Plan, which was a really great effort to bring the community together on a number of different fronts. Likewise, the county has invested millions downtown as well. The county is really the largest property owner in this area, and so when you look at us in that respect, you know that we have a vested interest in making sure that our investment in a property is taken care of, and that we do not allow that investment to deteriorate over time. We've infused about twenty-one million dollars, a little over twenty-one million dollars, in the downtown area in the last thirteen years by purchasing properties, redeveloping those properties, and then using them for governmental facilities. We've got some examples, like we've turned a nightclub into what is now adult probation. I laugh with folks from time to time that the same people are going there. It's just for a different purpose. So, you know, that was one of the renovations. The sheriff's office next door was another renovation, and then we took a laundromat, and this was under some of these commissioners that are here today. We're here during Judge Baker's term, and that was under his leadership, to move in that direction of systematically purchasing these properties and rehabilitating them, and I applaud them for those efforts, because those efforts were very valiant efforts, to put money back into the downtown area and to make sure that economic development occurred. But aside from the county and the city, what really is going to be, I think, the driver going forward, and the city and the county, through the discussions that I've had in the past, I think we're on the same page with this, is private investment. And we've seen a number of businesses over the years invest in downtown and bring back businesses downtown, and we currently have a number of businesses that are postured to do even more. And what we do not want to do is create roadblocks for them and their private investment and their development downtown. We want to be good partners with those businesses that have great ideas, and we're also of great ideas poised by other institutions in this community that have a vision to do something downtown, and we want to serve as a partner in that effort. We want, in fact, lead that effort and say, how can we come alongside you, really? I mean, that's the point of this coalition today, is how can we come alongside one another? Once we discussed through some of those issues and some of what had been boiling up in a good sense, we said, well, you know, what we really need is an intentional, unified, deliberative body that could act as a coalition that's dedicated to collaborative economic growth. And so that's why we formed this coalition. We need to unify those efforts together. Economic development just does not occur. Economic development really needs some intentionality to it, and government should not be the primary solution, but it certainly should not be the problem or the hesitation in what's going on. We play a very vital role, and as vocal members of this community, we can help come alongside the businesses and other institutions to drive this effort. One of the things that caught my attention in my mind as I thought through this process early on, and as I'll talk about with the coalition members, is what goes on in the downtown area of Tyler, what I call the heart of the county, it affects and emanates out to every corner of the county. There is no portion of the county in my mind that is unaffected by the economic stability of this downtown area. So when you see who's part of the coalition today, you'll realize that this is not just a city-county institution or a city-county development. We're bringing in folks from all parts of the county to give voice to those parts of the county to say, we recognize that this impacts us as well, and we want to build into this. As I mentioned, economic development is not accidental. It's intentional. So this core working group today is going to serve as the hub for really these intentional efforts. So what about this core working group that we're going to introduce here in just a minute? They are really just that, a core working group. They are not the entire coalition. I'm going to tell you right now, the coalition is anyone who wants to be involved, anyone who has a great idea. If you've been around me for about two or three minutes, you realize what I like is ideas. I like critical thinking with those ideas, brainstorming a number of ideas, vetting those ideas, and then putting those ideas into action quickly. But this core working group is really going to be, in my mind, an action team. I mean, that's what we need. We need an action team that's going to get out there and to make sure that we have ambassadors, evangelists for the ideas coming through that core working group, that they can vet, they can analyze, they can help make recommendations back to the institutions and governing bodies that are seated here, and others that may be involved as well. They can unify the source of communication and importantly, the venue for discussion. Because though we've had, in my mind, we've had a number of great plans in the past and great movement towards economic development, we've never really had a coalition as broad as what we see here today, that is an action coalition to move it forward. So a hub for gathering public input, data, and information, and then ultimately pushing for action on the backside. As we move past the first few meetings, which I'll talk about here in a second, there's a couple meetings that I'm going to already put on the calendar today. Once we move past those first couple meetings, I believe the direction of this core working group is going to be set by the ideas that come out that we say, hey, there's some low-hanging fruit here, we need to go after this idea fast. Or here, here's an idea that needs a little bit more extra study, how can we get that idea vetted before we recommend some action? Or, hey, this idea is great, but really, we need to put it on the back burner for now, because we've got some other things we need to get to. Helps us to prioritize the action items and get them moving. That's going to drive, then, how this coalition functions beyond the first couple of meetings. All right, so let me introduce the initial members of the proposed county seat coalition. We're going to do this in alphabetical order. First is Phil Burks. Phil, come on up. You guys know Phil Burks. He's the CEO of the Genesis Group. Phil has a unique mind for innovation. He's really involved in the innovation pipeline and has been a stalwart here in the community from an IT perspective. Next is Brooke Dropchini. She's the Advanced Project Development Director from Tech Dot. Brooke's been involved in the heart of Tyler and some other organizations for downtown. She's also, has a great engineering mind for transportation and traffic issues, which no doubt will be issues that we're going to have to discuss through the coalition. Next is Mr. Bob Garrett. He's the president and CEO of the Fair Oil Limited. You guys know Bob. I mean, Bob is, Bob knows this community inside and out better than probably anybody, and he's got a mind for business that we're going to need to vet some of these ideas. Next is Shelby Glover. Shelby is the first person that I'm going to introduce that's from outside of the city of Tyler. She's the executive director of the Lindale Chamber of Commerce, and Shelby has been up in the Lindale Chamber of Commerce for several years. Is it ten years now, Shelby? Twelve? Twelve years, up in Lindale, and if you've seen what's gone on in Lindale, you'll know that she's had a direct hand in that development up there, and she will bring a unique perspective of that sector and that geography of the county. Next is Ms. Joanne Hampton, Commissioner Joanne Hampton. She represents our commissioner precinct that is part of this geographic center here in Smith County. Next is Tony Johnson. Tony is from the community of Bullard. Tony and I met several years ago through another nonprofit, but he was formerly manager at the Brookshires down in Bullard. He's on the Bullard ISD, and he's been, he's involved in construction, the construction business as well, and an all-around great guy, and you need to get to know Tony. But he really has a heart and a passion for the Bullard community and that south part of Smith County. Broderick McGee is next. That's part of the coalition. Councilman McGee, though new to the city of Tyler, his district, again, is geographically centered here in downtown, and we welcome Broderick McGee to the coalition. Next is Dr. Juan Mejia. Dr. Mejia, come on up. Dr. Mejia is the president for branch locations and district provost for the Tyler Junior College. We're happy that Dr. Mejia is part of our coalition. I met him probably five or six years ago, probably five years ago, when he was still in South Texas, and immediately, in about thirty seconds, I knew this was a guy that I liked. And you'll find that to be true as well. He's got a great mind for education and for innovation and ideas. Next is Tom Mullins, really representing our Economic Development Council and our chamber on this coalition. chamber on this coalition. Tom really does not need an introduction, but he's the president and CEO of both the Tyler Chamber of Commerce and TEDC. And we've already talked with Tom about trying to get us some analysis pretty quick and some recommendations for this body as the president and CEO of the Tyler Chamber. Next is the Honorable Kerry Russell. He's the district judge of the 7th District Court in Smith County. For me, as I began to put together this core working group, it seemed imperative that we had a representative from the judiciary because the county seat, as it is in all counties, is really the place where justice occurs. And whatever happens here economically, whatever happens from a development standpoint, whatever occurs from the use of the county properties that we own, it's going to impact the judiciary. And I wanted to have that voice on the coalition. Next is Sam Scarborough. He's a representative of the Downtown Business Owners Group. He's with Vineu Properties. But in talking about this idea with the Downtown Business Owners Group, what I wanted to get from them was a representative that could be a voice of those that actually had physical property investment tied to downtown that could communicate through Sam their notions, their ideas, their beliefs of what needed to happen here downtown. Next is Aaron Smith. Aaron is also from outside the city of Tyler. He was the city manager of the City of White House and has done an extraordinary job in the past couple of years since he's been with the City of White House. Came from the Midwest before that. Was it Nebraska? No. Nebraska, was Nebraska. And has been in White House for a couple of years. And he, like the others up here, have a sharp mind for governmental, the appropriate role of a government in this process and will keep us on track. Next is Dr. Michael Tidwell. He's the president of the University of Texas at Tyler. You guys know and love Dr. Tidwell already. He hasn't been in this community about a year and a half now, I guess. Is that right, Dr. Tidwell? About a year and a half? But in my conversations, talking with him early on about how should we form this coalition and what should we do, the excitement in his face and his initial communications when he reached this community about UT being a leader in economic development in the region, not just the county, but the region. I know he's dedicated to that. His thoughts and ideas helped to shape and form what ultimately became this County Seat Coalition. So, Dr. Tidwell, thank you already for your contributions and your willingness to serve. Last is Ingrid Young. Ingrid is the president of the Heart of Tyler. And Ingrid and I have known each other for a number of years, but as a representative of the Heart of Tyler, she represents that organization that has the heartbeat, really, of Tyler. Getting away from some of the minutia and the details, she has that sense of emotion and feeling and love for this community like nobody else. And so, we wanted to make sure that the Heart of Tyler had a representative on this coalition. So, herein lies the core working group of the County Seat Coalition. The other two members would just be myself and Ed Broussard as co-chairs of the coalition. But we're really happy that each one of these members have decided to be a participant. Would you give them a hand? You can all be seated. And thank you for coming up here. Some of them may not have known I was going to call them up here. When we're done with this meeting, by the way, we're going to have a short reception down at the hub, and that will be your first opportunity as a community to meet these individuals, if you haven't already, for them to meet each other, for you to also present ideas and information that you have about what should happen for downtown development, for economic development in the heart of the county. We've got cards that you can write on down there and say, here's what I've been thinking, if it's big, small, or otherwise. And when you leave here today as well, we're going to flip the switch on our website, and there will be a place on the front page of the website where you can click on County Seat Coalition. And you can go ahead from now until eternity, far as I'm concerned. Get on there and give us input about what needs to happen downtown. So, if you just want to get on the computer, if you're like me, some of your best ideas happen at like 2:00 in the morning. And you can get out of bed and roll to your computer and send us your idea. If you have an idea about what should happen economically downtown, we want to receive that idea. But today, please join us down at the hub immediately following this meeting. All right, let's talk about future meeting dates, and then I'm going to open it up for discussion from the Commissioners' Court and the City Council, both jointly will have some joint discussion on this before we call for separate votes. Here's the first meeting that I want everyone to be aware of. Tuesday, December the 4th at 5:30. From 5:30 to 7:00, we're going to have really a town hall-style meeting, a, I want to call it a community brainstorm. Again, I think the best way to start is with generating as many ideas as possible, even if you believe those ideas are not possible. Bring those ideas so that we can use those as a platform to begin some discussion. Then Thursday, January 24th, my plan for that meeting is to have the core working group begin to receive information from our experts from TEDC, begin to vet these ideas that came in through either email or in writing or at this first meeting, and begin to separate out where do we need to begin to go in with some of these ideas. And then, in that meeting, Wednesday, February 20th, begin kind of making an action plan on which items we want to start attacking first, which ones are ready to move on, which ones need more idea, more time for development. So, first three meetings relatively quick, and then I anticipate those meetings will determine how often and in what manner we meet from then on. All right. At this point, I want to wrap up and ask if there's any questions. I want to remind you that this coalition will be driven by ideas and action. That's what it's about. If we're not taking action, if we're not moving the ball, this is going to get stationary on us, and we're all going to find other things that are better for our time. That's not my intent. My intent is to get some action going in this community for economic development collaboratively. All right. Any questions from anybody around the table, commissioners or city council members?
We're going to have a discussion when it comes time for us to vote, or...
Yeah, we can go and have the discussion now.
Now?
Yep.
Okay.
If you've got questions.
I received this agenda packet yesterday, and it's the first time I got a chance to look over it and read it all. And, you know, everything I say is not personal against anybody. I represent my constituents out in the county. And whenever we talk about this and first started or heard about it and everything, I thought it was really good. What I can see here in this memorandum, my understanding, is all about downtown Tyler. So, I am wondering what I thought that this was going to be about was going to be about where we could share in purchasing, you know, any type of purchasing items from fleet to wherever, where we could save, or transportation, sharing IT, pet shelter issues, and all of those kind of things where we could collaborate together. I thought that that's where this, is this not about that, or is it strictly about downtown Tyler?
That's item number four will be about that in particular, about the joint task force, looking at specific items on a staff level that the city of Tyler and Smith County can do together, like purchasing items and those kind of things. That's item number four. This is a more holistic, what's being introduced here is a more holistic coalition that will affect the county broadly on economic development. What other discussion or comments?
I just have a comment, Judge. This is a fine group of people. I think I know just about every one of these folks personally. And this is thrilling to me. Selfishly, I got to say, though, my district goes from Spring Street East, so where we're sitting is in my district, and most of the property that he's talking about is in my district. So, to see all these people represented here and what they're going to do, I'm extremely excited. But I'm with you. We've got to do, we've got to find things that are achievable, we can make things happen, and not just ideas. So, thank you all for serving.
Any other comments from commissioners or city council members this morning? That's your time. Any questions about the coalition itself? All right, hearing no other discussion, I'm going to ask for a motion for the commissioners, from the commissioners. Is there a motion to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding downtown development efforts as reflected in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan and the creation of a County Seat Coalition, and authorize the county judge to sign all related documentation? Is there a motion to that effect?
Still moved, Judge.
Motion by Commissioner Hampton. Is there a second? Second. Second by Commissioner Ward. Any further discussion on the commissioners on that motion and second? Calling for a vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That motion passes unanimously. Mayor?
Calling for a motion to request that the city of Tyler consider and take action to approve a memorandum of understanding. It's on, did I? I've already goofed, sorry. Request that the city of Tyler consider and take action to approve a memorandum of understanding between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding downtown development efforts as reflected in the Tyler First Comprehensive Plan and the creation of a County Seat Coalition.
Move to approve. Move to approve in one. Second.
All in favor? All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Thank you again to those coalition members that are here this morning and to those that are also going to participate in the process. Item number two on the agenda, request that Commissioners' Court consider and take necessary action to approve an agreement between the city of Tyler, Smith County, and the Retail Coach for Economic Development Services related to downtown business development. Going to turn this item over to the city manager, Ed Broussard, for introduction of our guest here today, and then we're going to have a presentation by the Retail Coach. Oh, you want to go ahead and call yours, too?
Oh, yes. Agenda item number two is to request that the city of Tyler consider and take necessary action to approve an agreement between the city of Tyler, Smith County, and the Retail Coach for Economic Development Services related to downtown business development.
Thank you, Judge and Mayor Protim. The item that was before the Commissioners' Court and City Council today is an item that we've been working on for the past few months as we look at the, kind of going along with the county seat development, our downtown area that the county is such an integral part of, and also working with our local businesses to see what can we do to continue kind of this renaissance that we're seeing with our downtown Tyler redevelopment. And one of the things we've looked at is what can we do to enhance recruitment of businesses to locate their places down here? And with that, we've had discussions with the Retail Coach specifically, and Aaron Farmer from the Retail Coach is here, to kind of discuss the process that they will use if we go ahead and move forward with this contract to be able to bring forward as far as economic development, as we talked, as the judge mentioned earlier, the intentionality of that economic development, and especially in business recruitment for our downtown area. Also, we will have noted, and I think at least council does, I don't know if the Commissioners' Court has this well, in relationship to the contract, the Heart of Tyler has also committed to help fund this contract if the city and the county move forward with that, with an amount of $5,000 that they are putting into this. So, they can also be invested into this as they understand how important it is to have a thriving downtown and county seat. Aaron?
Thanks, Mr. Broussard. Thank you for the introduction. I'm excited to be here today. I want to talk to you a little bit about the downtown Tyler revitalization and recruitment strategy. You know, it's great to hear, just as an outsider coming here, hearing y'all come together on this. Because I will tell you, I've been in economic development now for almost 15 years, and what we hear on a regular basis is downtowns are important. What I've seen throughout Texas and really throughout the nation is some communities that have forgotten about downtowns. They've let them go kind of by the wayside, and certain communities forgot about certain areas and this sort of thing. So, it's exciting to see, and I will tell you, from a site selector's standpoint, from an economic development standpoint, we come into communities, we come into counties, and we look at these downtown areas as the pulse of the community. I've heard it referred to as the heart of the community, and that's absolutely true. So, it's exciting to see that happening here. I want to, real quick, got a short presentation for you, want to talk a little bit about our firm, just so you have a little bit of background. We do have history in Tyler. We've worked in Tyler and surrounding areas for a number of years, going back 10-plus years throughout the community. We have 50-plus years of economic brokerage and developer relationships. I've been with the company now for 10-plus years. You'll see up here what our project team looks like. You can see myself up there. I would be the project lead. So, what that means is any updating to the committee, anything really happening there would be myself, and then also Kyle Kofer, which is out here in the audience with this as well. But we're big believers that if we're going to be successful in a process like this, a plan like this, we absolutely have to be on the ground. We have to know what's happening on every corner, at every intersection in the community. We've got to understand what's happening there. So, it's us being in the community. I will tell you, just in preparation for this presentation and putting this together, I came to Tyler four times over the last couple of months. Thank you. So, I want to talk to you just a little bit about that today. But what we do at the Retail Coach is we help communities identify opportunities. We actively recruit those prospects to the community, and then we coach these communities on long-term success. And I will tell you, and I think you have an understanding of this, but this is a long-term approach. This is a long-term process, but you have to start somewhere. And just having spent some time here the last couple of months, you've got that foundation. You've got some awesome things happening right now, some new businesses have come in, some new things are happening in downtown and really throughout the county, that it's really exciting to see these things happening. So, what our focus is, is a number of different things. But when we say prospects or looking at recruitment, we're looking at retailers. We're looking at restaurants. We're looking at developers. We're looking at brokers. We're looking at hospitality. We're looking at office, and we're looking at entertainment. So, I remember it used to be, when people would look to move to a community, they would first find a job, and then that's where they would move to. Well, we've seen kind of a transition and a change over the last number of years in that people figure out where they want to live first, and then they find a job. So, it's, there's been that change. Have you all seen that? There's a change. And one of the things that we've found is people want that quality of life. If they're going to locate in a community, there has to be quality of life. So, quality of life, parks, healthcare, retail is part of quality of life, and that's one of the things they look at. So, it's very important, as we look at these different types of businesses, I included entertainment in there, hospitality, all of them come together for that economic development, for that overall strategy. So, when we talk about prospects, this is what we're talking about, everything kind of in this range here. I don't know if I mentioned it, but also the office possibilities. That's another possibility for some of the downtown area as well. But one of the first things we want to do is we want to look at where are people coming from as it sits right now? To shop, to eat, to work in downtown, to do things in the evenings, where are they coming from? So, part of that is this new technology that's out there where instead of looking at a downtown area or a community based on a radial or a drive time, a computer model, we're now looking at factual data. We can actually tell who's in downtown, where they're coming from, how many times they're shopping in downtown. So, we're going to run a cell phone analysis, number one, to understand who's shopping in downtown. And don't worry, we're not selling this information or anything like that. It's really just to get a feel for what does that draw look like? What is that total draw to downtown, and what could it be in the future? So, this cell phone analysis, I think, will be very important. What I like about this cell phone analysis is we can not only tell where people are coming from and where they live, but what their households are, but we can also tell where their businesses are, where they work. And when you look at downtown areas, number one, what a lot of retailers, what a lot of restaurants, what a lot of the developers and prospects look at is they look at that daytime population. What does that daytime population look like for that trade area? And this analysis will help us really understand what that looks like because in talking with a couple of brokers and really developers in the last couple of weeks, really understanding the daytime population of Tyler is kind of, not the easiest thing to do because people drive in from such far distances to come here for work every day. So, that's, we're not only going to look at where are people coming from, what are their households, but also where are they working, and what does that daytime population look like? We also want to analyze that consumer. We look at demographics, obviously, so everything from age and income, those sort of things, that's important to these prospects. But we're also, we want to know more qualitative data about them as well. What do they, where do they shop at? What do they do from an entertainment standpoint? So, we're going to look at something called psychographics. Has anybody heard that phrase before? Okay, a few of us. It's, the best way I've heard it described is demographics on steroids. So, we all know what age, income, typical demographic things, but psychographics tells us what would people like to see in a downtown area? What's missing? So, we're going to not only look at demographics, but we're going to also look at psychographics. So, we have to have that analysis complete in order to really put together a strategy for recruitment. And one thing you'll never hear me call this is a study. I hate that, I hate that word, "study," because when you say "study," I think of those things that sit up on a shelf and maybe get looked at here every once in a while. This is a strategy. This is a recruitment strategy where you're going to see some actual results, whether it's new business coming to downtown, whether it's a new office building, or something along those lines that are happening here. It's actually a strategy. You're going to see some success and some results there. So, one last thing from an analysis standpoint, we want to look at is... So, one last thing from an analysis standpoint, we want to look at, is what is that, that leakage, or what are the gaps? What are people leaving downtown for, to, to, that's not existing in downtown? What are they leaving for on a regular basis? So, we're going to run what's called a gap analysis, or, or a leakage analysis, that will really tell us that. Where are those gaps? What's missing in the downtown area? What could be successful? What is the demand for that, for that use? Being able to really tie dollars to a demand, use, or tie it to a use, is really what, what helps speed up that process, what gets investors excited, is, is being able to tie that to real dollars. So, we're going to do that as well. And then I think this is probably one of the, the key, if not the most important slides in, in this deck here, is identifying those opportunities. So, I will tell you, the last several months, I've spent time walking downtown, driving downtown, really paying a lot of attention to what, what opportunities exist here. So, when I say development opportunities, I'm talking about really in the downtown area redevelopment opportunities. So, it could be a property that's not serving its highest and best use. Maybe it's a, you've got quite a few vacant buildings in certain, certain areas that are not serving their highest and best use. So, identifying some, some new uses for some of these buildings down there, some, some different areas as well. So, I want to emphasize that, you know, really taking a hard look, maybe doing some conceptual planning as what something looks like right now, doing some conceptual planning to show what it could look like if there was some investment made. I've found that's, that's really key when you're looking to get investors, you're looking to get businesses in. But, one of the, one of the keys here, why I said I think this is the most important process, is we're going to spend a lot of time, our team, really diving in and understanding the property ownership in downtown. Now, I've heard that, obviously, the county is the largest, the largest ownership entity in the downtown area, but we're going to, we're going to pay attention, we're going to go talk to the existing business owners that are there, our property owners that are there. One of the things I noticed in just doing a search is you've got a lot of out-of-state property owners in the, in the Tyler, in the downtown area. We've got to get in touch with them, some in California, some other places like that, some in the Dallas-Fort Worth area. We've really got to pay attention to that. So, our team is going to spend a lot of time doing some background work, talking to these existing property owners, really seeing what, what opportunities exist there, helping them, helping explain to them that this is what the opportunity is. If they'll invest some, some, some of their money into this, if they, if they want to sell the property, we can help get it in front of the right people. So, I wanted to focus on that, because really, the first question we get when we bring a prospect to the community is what sites are available? You know, we like the community, we like the downtown area, you've got to bring us sites. So, having a, having a database, having an available listing of sites to take to them, whether they're looking for 5,000 square feet, or whether they're looking for 50,000 square feet, is really going to be key in this process. We're going to identify prospects. So, when I say identify prospects, I, I mentioned the different types that we're going to look at, so whether it's retail, whether it's restaurants, whether it's hospitality, entertainment, we've got to find prospects that fit the community. All of them have what we call customer profiles, where they're looking for certain incomes in, in a community, they're looking for a certain population, a certain population density in an area. In order for these prospects to be a fit, that has to exist here. We want to go after, number one, identify prospects that should be in the downtown area, work with this, this core group here to, to make sure that's in line with everyone's thinking there, and then go out and, and bring them to the table. We've had success, and are having success right now in a, a number of large downtown areas, and I think it, I think it has to do with the economy, to be honest with you. I think it has to be, it has to do with people are excited, we're seeing more, more moving back into downtown areas. Do you remember we saw kind of the, the going away from the downtown areas in, in a lot of different aspects? Well, now it's coming back, and now is the time to, to really be looking at this. So, when I say recruitment, that's not us just sending an email, or a letter, or something to somebody like that. We are actually emailing, we're sending out, we're, we're making phone calls, we're having sit-down meetings, we're attending industry trade shows, where we're bringing these prospects to the table. The goal is to get them here, get them at a table here in front of us. If we can get them in the car, and we can get them to downtown, and get these prospects looking at that, it's an easy sell, if, if you want to know my honest, my honest opinion. So, our recruitment process is, is something that's very important. I, I think, Judge, you mentioned that relationships are very important, and really, every, every aspect of, of life, really. And I, I had a, I had a professor tell me a long time ago, he said, "It's not about what you know, but it's about who you know." And we've, we've realized that when it comes to real estate, when it comes to downtown development, that's what it takes, is those relationships. And what we've tried to do at the Retail Coach is really build on those relationships, kind of leverage our business off of those relationships, and, you know, if you, if you help a prospect locate five successful locations, they're going to listen to you again. So, that's really how we've leveraged our business, and really how we leverage our recruitment process. Just to kind of wrap up here, we're also going to develop some marketing materials. If, if we're looking to really enhance what's happening in the downtown area, really focus on that, we've got to have some high-quality marketing materials that go along with that. They've got to have the numbers, they've got to have the properties that are available, anything a prospect would want to see. So, that will be, that's included in, as part of this process, is identifying those properties. We're also going to develop site profiles. So, site profiles are properties, after we talk to the property owner, that, that we can have on a database, or we can have on, on, on the website, to make them available, so it's easy to understand what's available in downtown. We're also going to have a GIS system that, that we run, where these, these reports that we're going to run in the beginning, we're able to pull those up in real-time. You can be walking through downtown with an iPad, and you can pull up these, these reports, really anywhere in Tyler, and be able to see what the demographics look like, be able to see what the, the opportunities are, be able to see what sites are available. So, really, really a neat process there. But, from managing the project standpoint, we, we report on a, on a bi-weekly basis. So, every two weeks, we're continually updating our clients. I will tell you, when we get a prospect that's, that's ready to go, we're not waiting two weeks. We're, we're calling you, we're emailing you, we're texting you, "Hey, what can we do to, to get this, to, to get a meeting set up, to get these people down here?" You've got to be aggressive when it comes to economic development, and we, we realize that. So, you will know at all times what's going on, from, from the standpoint of what we're doing at the Retail Coach, and we want to make sure it's in line with your plan and what's, what's going on with downtown. So, from a timing standpoint, I will tell you, just with what's happening and what we're seeing in downtown areas, now is the time to be going after that, going after this type of, type of projects. So, appreciate the, the opportunity to present here, and all, Judge, if it's okay, I'll open up for some questions.
Okay. Anybody have questions, either from the City Council, Commissioners Court, or Mr. Farmer?
Just how long does it take you to get this information, or, and bring it back?
So, luckily, we have, like I said, we have a history here in Tyler, and we've done a lot of groundwork already. We're looking at two weeks to a month to really have the, the base data ready to go. What will take a little bit longer time standpoint, I think, is the, is the property, talking to some of these property owners, especially if they're not local. I think that's, might take just a little bit longer here, but really, the data, the analysis standpoint, we're looking at about a month. So, really want to fast-track it, to, to be honest, obviously doing, doing a, a really good job, but also kind of fast-track it, because we want to hit some of these prospects while they're active, and they're expanding, and, and looking to get them here.
Other questions? Can you elaborate on some other communities where y'all have had success?
Absolutely. So, we've worked in, about 90% of our projects are in Texas. So, we work all over the US, but we, a lot of our projects are focused on downtown areas. So, some of the downtown areas that I think about where we're having success, McKinney is a good example, if you're familiar with McKinney. We worked in McKinney for five-plus years, was on the phone with them this morning, actually. Another one is downtown Odessa. And I don't know if you've heard about what's going on in Odessa with their downtown area, they just had an announcement, it's already going up, to be honest, it's a 60-plus million-dollar hotel, Marriott Hotel going downtown, 15, 10 to 15 million dollar apartment complex going in, some new restaurants, and some new retail going in there. So, those are two examples that, that are really, right now, kind of just continually, we're having success.
How many prospects reached out? I've read 25, but surely it's got to be more than that?
So, it is. So, it's 25 for each type of, each type of, that you saw up there.
Oh, okay.
I lost.
The different retails, the restaurants?
Restaurants, hotels, those are things.
All those things.
We put 25 on there, but I will tell you, what we do is if we exhaust that list, or we get through and 10 of them say, "Hey, we're not interested at this moment," we're going to add 10 additional ones to that. So, it's at all times, you're going to have 25 prospects that we're actively outreach for in each of those categories.
Is this more than just emailing them, or?
It, absolutely. Yeah, I, I will tell you, email does work, if you email the right people, and, and you have those relationships. So, we do start out with emails, but what that includes is emails, phone calls, but we go to a lot of these industry trade shows. I don't know if you're familiar with ICSC, International Council of Shopping Centers, that's one of the organizations we go to, and that's a place for municipalities to get in front of developers, brokers, mixed-use developers, whatever it might be. So, that's a big part of this as well, is, is going to these industry trade shows, but at the end of the day, what we're looking to do is we're looking to get them to this community. So, if it takes an email, if it takes a phone call, if it takes a mixture of all of these things, whatever it takes to get him here, get them here is what we're looking to do.
Other questions? Those are good questions. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Farmer, we appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Broussard, anything else to add to that? All right. So, you've received the presentation, you've looked at the proposed services and contract in the, in the agreement. From the Commissioners Court, I would entertain a motion to approve an agreement between the City of Tyler, Smith County, and the Retail Coach for Economic Development Services related to downtown business development, and authorize the county judge to sign all related documentation. Is there a motion to that effect?
So, move.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner War, and a second by Commissioner Nix. Any further discussion by the Commissioners on that motion?
We're going to spend roughly $19,000. For the City of Tyler people here, I question everything when we go to spending money and how it's going to
That's very true.
...affect the county and the bottom line. So, if, if I was sitting on the City Council like you are, I'd be really excited about this. This is great. Obviously, I'm not, I can't get real excited about spending $19,000, when I don't see a lot of benefit to the county. It's great what you're doing. I love Tyler, I love what y'all do, building up Tyler, you know, I, I wouldn't live here if I didn't love Tyler. But, what kind of benefit basically financially does this do for the county, when if, if we bring the Marriott, or whoever in here to build these, it's going to be years down the road before the county ever sees a dime, because we gave it all away in the TRIS for the downtown area. So, that's where I'm at on this thing. So, does, can anybody help me get past that?
Commissioner, I would just say, obviously, it's, it doesn't appear to be as direct effect for my constituents like in Bullard. Obviously, we just helped them, you know, with a park that we, we communicate, I mean, we, I don't know the word, but anyway, you know, we'll work with the other communities at times to, to benefit their communities. In this one, because we are the, it is the seat of county government, we're required by the Constitution to have the courthouse near the center of the county, and that's, it's been the case here ever since. Fighting urban blight, you know, and fortunately, I do believe the tide has turned, but it's been a long process, been already 10 or 15 years of people working, investing private capital, public capital, but we, we own a lot of property downtown, and if they can bring in additional jobs into this area, I think it helps our, our citizens, regardless of where you live, not just the ones in Tyler, that we also represent. But, it, it does help with the urban blight, and we're, we're becoming a more urban county, as, particularly in my district, which is the Flint-Gresham-Bullard corridor. If you fly red at night in a small plane, it's amazing, the subdivisions that are out there now. Well, even though those people may not come every day to downtown Tyler, it will cost them more in 10 or 15 years if we ignore some issues, and, and don't continue to help, I think, push that, that ball down the hill to, to bring more business in here. That's, that's my opinion. That it's more of an urban blight concern to me, that the vandalism, graffiti, things like that on our buildings, our adjoining business, the more people that live here, work here, that helps us, I believe, in the long term.
Right. What you're talking about, Commissioner War, and this, it's a great comment, Commissioner Phillips, I, I know it's always a concern, we need to be sure that we're spending money appropriately for our citizens. What you're talking about is going to impact our jails, and our justice system, and the cost of providing those services, which is central to what a county does. Urban blight would drive crime up. I think the long view is that our tax base increases. That's, even if it's 10 years down the road, we have something major that comes in, we're going to, we're going to see good financial benefit from that down the, down the line. I also think that it protects the value of the property that we own, which is primarily here in downtown, and make sure that that value doesn't go down as well. So, I think there's good value in it, but I certainly understand your perspective. Any, any other comments? Go ahead.
I, I agree with Commissioner War, but when you look at your constituents, they're coming into our hospitals, our schools, so they're going to benefit from whatever we have downtown. They don't have to drive all the way south. If we have restaurants, they can eat downtown. There'll be additional jobs, so all that comes into play whenever we do something in this area.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I think it's great and everything, but I have to look at it, you know, what we spend and everything. Obviously, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great deal of what this thing is, and the company that's going to do it and everything. I'd be really excited if I was on the City of Tyler, or if it's happening in the City of Lindell. But, anyway, it's, it's, it's a really good deal. We represent what 50% of our population is in the county. I can support it, but I just wanted to make that point, that don't get real excited because you gave away all of our money in the TRIS when it went to the City of Tyler, basically, for many years.
All right. We've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion to approve this item? If not, from the Commissioners Court, I'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Mayor?
Do I hear a, a motion for Agenda Item Two, requesting the City of Tyler consider and take necessary action to approve an agreement between the City of Tyler, Smith County, and the Retail Coach for Economic Development Services related to downtown business development?
Make a motion to approve, item two.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Motion carries.
All right. Item number three on our agenda is request that the Commissioners Court consider and take necessary action to enter into a, inter-local agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County regarding the maintenance of Legacy Trail. Mayor, you want to call your?
Item number three, request that the heart of Tyler will consider and take necessary action to enter into an inter-local agreement between the City of Tyler and Smith County regarding the maintenance of Legacy Trail.
Mr. Broussard, do you want to, you guys have a short presentation on this, as I understand, is it correct?
We do, yes, sir. And so, Commissioners Court and City Council want to do a little bit, talk a little bit about the Legacy Trail project, and then also the item you have before you today. The Legacy Trail is a continuation of projects that the city had started on its trail development, and this is kind of a, a dream that was had of connecting ultimately the Cumberland area, when we did the Cumberland Extension, all the way to our Rose Rudman Trail. There was a few, as far as snags along the way, as y'all are well aware of any project that you do, and as that, it was a bit redesigned, and the redesign took it to then where the Rose Rudman Trail ends up being connected to our southern part of our community, along Grande, and ultimately then along Old Jacksonville Highway, branching out in two different directions, one of which continues down and connects to the Cumberland Extension, and the other one reaches down into the Flint-Gresham area. one reaches down into the Flint-Gresham area. And so with this, this adds an additional 4.5 miles of 10-foot-wide hike and bike trails in those two different directions with areas for trail hubs along the way for all of our citizens to be able to enjoy. We hired the Brandon Corporation to be able to do the design and construction on this project, with $3.5 million of that being from a Transportation Assistance Program grant that we were able to receive, and then also $2.2 million that the city put into this project as well. Construction is currently underway, and the trail down there is providing connectivity to the Gresham-Flint area, particularly in that retail section there in Gresham, especially along the old abandoned railroad right-of-way that it currently exists, where we are putting in a new concrete trail. Here's a bit of the construction already in progress. If you do have the opportunity, feel a little bit like you want to get out and touch nature, please feel free to try out these, as they are currently under construction, but quite a bit of it is already open. Now with this trail, though, the pieces within the city limits on the trail are, you see there, outlined, and then the areas that are outside of the city limits, especially as it get towards the Gresham area, along Old Jacksonville Highway, and connects then into the retail section that's over there in Gresham. The item you have before you today delineates the responsibilities amongst the city and the county for this project. Route B would be entirely within the city limits, as you see there. Route A over there, the best place kind of to connect it at the begin piece is just south of the Fresh Grocery Store is the trail hub that is there for located. And as you can see, how it follows the old abandoned railroad right-of-way there, goes behind Bruno's, as well as along the residential, and some of that area crosses 49, and ultimately ends there at the retail center in Gresham. The portion of that is outside the city limits, gets, begins kind of just in that Bruno's area, if you're kind of familiar with that location, along Old Jacksonville Highway. And that would be the part that we would be asking the county to consider for maintenance of this. The maintenance piece of it is mowing twice a month during the summer months, mowing once a month during the winter months, just trimming and pruning as needed, and then general cleanup and having kind of your crews go out there occasionally just to check to make sure that all is well.
Thank you, Mr. Broussard. Thanks for that presentation. And Commissioner Joel, you'll notice that this seems very much like the interlocals that we've entered into with other cities around the county with respect to our road development. Mayor Carlisle is here from the city of Troop, and he can tell you by the roads we just did with the city of Troop and Partnership down there. And like those partnerships that we've had with some of our outlined cities, we were looking at partnership avenues with the city of Tyler. This was one. It's a trail that goes both within the city of Tyler and within the bounds of the county. So I would like to present that to you for consideration. Who has a question of Mr. Broussard or for discussion here today about this item?
What is the length of mileage there for the county's portion?
I don't have the length for the county's portion right now. We did make this agreement where as we may do annexation in the future, that area, obviously, will shrink as we take in parts of that trail if we were to annex in that direction. So we did not put in the length. But the current piece, I would just say, I don't have the distance component, but you're going to talk about, like I said, from about that Bruno, the Bruno's location down continues south to the Gresham Retail Center.
I would think, Commissioner, it's roughly a mile, Frank. Is that about what you would think?
Mr. Davis, why don't you come up here? We've talked about this. I want to get your opinion because it'll be in the city engineer's purview to see that this work gets done. So tell us about your thoughts on this and answer that question.
Yes, Frank Davis, county engineer. We did look at this, and it's closer to about two miles total length on that. We have looked at that, the possibility and what the additional workload would be, and it's acceptable to us. We were able to do that. And we've even looked at that if we have to, we will do some work on Saturdays or weekends so that we can have our crews out there doing that work, so we won't interfere with the work within the county.
And is it projected to end, I know where it ends now, you know, behind the little businesses there, Whataburger and Gus's Place and all that. Has other right-of-way been acquired that I'm not familiar with, the old railroad track going south of there at this point, or do you know?
We have all the, essentially, our terminus point is at that location. We have all the right-of-way already acquired. We're waiting a little bit to where we can get it dried up to be able to finish the construction. Construction currently goes and terminates about to where we have the, or the new tennis and swim location has been put in. And so from there, then south, is the piece that still has to be under construction, but we have all the right-of-way that's already located.
And that Steve Thornton's development there, that has been annexed, correct? There was a surrender annexation?
There are parts of that that have not been annexed, and so that is the.
On the backside, the county roadside, correct. But the front side facing Old Jacksonville and the entryway is.
Before I say for certain, I'd want to take a look at a map just to be valid with you. But we have taken in quite a bit of that area already.
Well, it's outside of the norm, quite honestly, for us to have sidewalks or any type of walking trails. And, you know, I've got concerns that we, that's not something that we're set up to do, much like the city does with parks and, you know, crews that keep y'all, the medians looking so well. That's not really what Frank's charge is, and it's outside of our normal thing, but in light that it is residential area, people can walk now from there over to Faulkner Park, which they will do. And if they'll ride their bikes there and stay off the county road, it would really be awesome. But that's just my two cents word. But, you know, I would, I want to look at this at possibly even setting up a nonprofit organization. If it grows out in the county, if Texas, I know they're pushing for these things. I see them come through the NPO that perhaps there's a group that might want to take that on, so it's not left up to the taxpayers. Although it's going to be, it's a wooded area primarily, property in that area, and so the railroad right-of-way, I'm more concerned, less concerned about mowing as I am cutting down trees that may fall on it. But Frank will probably just push those out of the way anyway. So, yeah, he's shaking his head. That's either what happens to him. But that's my only concern is if, since it is in my area, I'd like to maybe work with the NPO and some others to possibly find an organization that might want to take that on, almost like an adopt a trail program.
And there may be some other things, if you look at your area, because of the fact it is a nature trail, and thus you want to try to kind of create a nature. There may be, as far as just pre-emergence, that can be placed along there to help reduce your mowing cycle. Some of the area, especially before, kind of north of 49, but outside the city limits, is pretty open. It's kind of a prairie area. Now, once you hit on the other side of 49, you do start to hit as far as some wooded areas, so thus your issue about the trees is something you might want to have to take a look at, but.
Is part of it also goes and turns to, I'm sorry, Commissioner, over to the baseball park down the new Cumberland Road? I just, is that under construction, so is it open?
It goes down, there's part in there that goes down the Encore right-of-way, that straight part coincides.
That's the part that's most being used right now, and there's a lot of people on that.
Because the Jack Elementary subdivisions are really exploded in.
Kind of like the wide sidewalks down Grande that coincide with the Encore right-of-way, so.
Commissioner Nix, you have a comment, question?
Well, I know that we're mowing twice a month, and I'm having trouble even getting mowed one time a year out of the county, and it's going to be a hard sell for, to tell my constituents, we're going to go up there and mow twice a month, and we can't get mowed. I know we budgeted new mowers and stuff, and hopefully that'll alleviate, but I hope you're not spreading yourself too thin there.
Well, now, that brought up a question. I was wondering if we might could have changed that on our end to as needed, you know, instead of putting Frank under some mandatory arbitrary number.
Discretion of the county or something.
I thought we would need that, you know.
When in the hot summer months, you're not, if there's not rain, you're not going to have to mow anyway.
I had the same concerns.
I'm sorry.
We need to be mowed twice a month.
Those are good comments, and it's true, the county is a little bit different, and this is great discussion, and it's wonderful for everybody to hear this, actually, because the county and the city actually are very different in some of their core governmental functions. And so the city having a Parks and Rec Department is more set up to do this kind of stuff, and we want to be good partners, and we have that ability to do it, but perhaps an as-needed language instead of twice a month would be okay.
And the cleanup daily was a concern for me.
I think that language is, what that language means is once, when we do work out there, at the end of that workday, then we'll clean that up. We won't leave it a mess, is what it means. It doesn't mean we're going to be out there.
That a little funny.
After whatever, but.
Yeah, for clarity's sake, where it says at the end of each workday, that doesn't mean we're going to be out there Monday through Friday.
And we just, I have one more question, because Frank, you mentioned weekends. How are we going to offset that cost?
That is the, we have, part of the budget that was approved was for new equipment like that, but also for seasonal help throughout the summer. And so that would be, that work and those hours would be using that seasonal employment for that, for this use.
So they may be mowing on Saturdays anyway.
Yes, they may be mowing on Saturdays anyway.
If they're doing it anyway, yes.
Want Terry to have a fit.
You know, these were my concerns as well, because I knew there would be some extra employment money there or comp time or whatever, but if we can change it to what you said it, Commissioners Court discretion, or Frank's, or Jeff's, since it's his area.
I'd love to.
You know, I'm fine with them doing it just like we do now, you know, where they call, but.
So if we change the language in the MOU to just read mowing as needed, like the other items are listed as needed, would you guys be fine with that?
Absolutely.
Not fine with that.
All right. Zack has said all right with the city. I know we'll be good stewards. We promise we'll be good stewards.
As long as you be good stewards, we'll hold you to it.
Okay.
Sure, someone will lend.
I will tell you that the Oak Hill part of Legacy Trail is busy all the time, and I almost think the people that walk on that trail would probably mow it for you.
Well, good.
But I'm not promising that.
We have a lot of pedestrians that need a lot of community time. We need to.
No, that's a great idea.
We do. We have an awful lot of community citizens that need an opportunity to serve their.
That's right.
Do you agree, councilman?
It's fine. We know where to get ahold of y'all.
Yeah, I'm sure you can get in touch with us.
You won't see me walking on the trail, but that's neither here nor there.
All right.
I don't run, I don't walk. I'm ready on technology.
That's good discussion on that item. Is there a motion for the Commissioners Court, is there a motion to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding the maintenance of Legacy Trail asset forth in the MOU with the single change of mowing as needed instead of the once, twice per month during the summer months and once per month during the winter months?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Warren, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Nix. Any further discussion by Commissioners? All in favor, say aye. No, aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously as amended. City?
From City Council, item number three, request that the city of Tyler consider and take necessary action to enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Tyler and Smith County regarding the maintenance of Legacy Trail with maintenance as needed on that trail.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Item number four is our last agenda item on the agenda today. Request that the Commissioners Court consider and take necessary action to appoint a joint financial task force between the city of Tyler and Smith County to meet periodically to discuss avenues of financial and operational cooperation between each governmental entity for the purposes of budgetary savings, increased efficiency of service, and harnessing economies of scale.
Item number four, request the city of Tyler consider and take necessary action to appoint a joint financial task force between the city of Tyler and Smith County to meet periodically to discuss avenues of financial and operational cooperation between each governmental entity for the purpose of budgetary savings, increased efficiency of services, and harnessing economies of scale.
Commissioner Phillips, this is what you were mentioning earlier, what you were looking forward to. This is the item where we want to, on really a staff level, begin to get into some of the weeds and the details of how government works, both at the city level and the county, and see how we can do it more efficiently for those joint citizens, purchasing, transportation, whatever it is. I mean, there's a thousand different things that we could do together that we need to look at, and we want to establish a task force, three from the county, three from the city, to meet on a quarterly basis and have those individuals over this next year, especially leading to the next budget year, determine how can we actually cut some costs and do some things together. So that's really the general perspective. Mr. Broussard, you want to add anything to that about this item?
I will actually leave it to the mayor pro tem, Ms. Sellers, to.
I think you explained it well.
All right. It is really, I think, going to be something that's going to transform the way we communicate and do business together. On behalf of the county, I would like to nominate, and this is the motion I'm going to look for unless there's any questions from Commissioners or City Council members about this item. I'd like to nominate Ann Wilson and Leonardo Brown and myself as the county budget officer to be the three members of the task force from the county. Is there a motion to appoint the three of us to the joint financial task force between the city of Tyler and Smith County?
I move it approved.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Phillips and second by Commissioner Hampton. Any further discussion by Commissioners?
This is the one item I'm most excited about that's been needed for a long time and that I think can benefit the city and the county together, so I'm real happy about this and think it'll work well.
Maybe we could parlay this into the other municipalities after this gets going.
That's right. I think it's a great idea. Having these discussions with all of our municipalities is important. It's why we started that Connecting Communities Initiative, and we've done that informally, but this is a great formal partnership really with the city of Tyler.
Judge, if Mr. Brown would maybe reach out to us, we could have a time before each one of your meetings, so if we have suggestions or ideas or hear something from the public, we could pass that on.
Good. Good. We have a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? That item passes unanimously for the county. City?
Do I hear a motion for Agenda Item Four, requesting that the city of Tyler consider and take necessary action to appoint a joint financial task force between the city of Tyler and Smith County to meet periodically to discuss avenues of financial and operational cooperation between each governmental entity for the purpose of budgetary savings, increased efficiency of services, and harnessing economies of scale. And do we also accept the committee that's been appointed?
So moved.
Committee on the county side.
County side. Do we have a committee, do we have appointees from the city side?
Okay. Ed, you want to give us the appointees from the city side? I only found out about this job yesterday.
He gets volunteered.
Thank you, ma'am, and you've been doing a good job of it. And so the recommendation that the, by the way, there's also a, the mayor, who as May mentioned earlier, was unable to be here, but he also kind of seconds what we've heard from the county, where he feels this is a very important item and wants to make sure that it is noted just on kind of the sincerity that he has towards this and the participation he wants to have towards it. And the recommendation that kind of comes from that is he has asked if the city council would be able, willing to consider himself, as far as Mayor Martin Hines, the city manager, and the chief financial officer, and our purchasing manager also be brought in from time to time to have them appointed to the task force.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
All right. Wouldn't you know it, we have completed our agenda for today, and I just want to have two minutes of closing remarks here, and then if anybody else has anything to say, we can do that and we'll adjourn. But I want to say thank you, especially to the city of Tyler for coming today. The reason why these meetings don't happen but about once a generation is because they're difficult, because county government and city government are very different, and it takes effort to work together. No matter how good the individuals are serving on each body, it really takes effort to be able to come together and find common ground. So I want to say thank you to those members of the city of council and to the Commissioners Court for finding ways to come together today on this, and this is just going to be the beginning in my mind. I think we're in store for some great action moving forward, as long as we keep our eye on the ball that there's some things that we can do together, and those things we can't, we can't. But we're going to move together on those things we can and do the best we can for our citizens. So thank you all for being here today. Any final comments for you, Mayor?
We just thank you for bringing this coalition together, sir, and on behalf of the city of Tyler, we're anxious to get started.
Good. I'd invite you all to, down to the hub. There's some food and refreshments down there. You can begin leaving your comments about what you want to see from an economic development standpoint for the coalition to look at, and you can meet the coalition members, mingle with the city council and the Commissioners down at the hub, which is just one block to your left as you exit the courthouse annex. The time now is 4:56. The Commissioners Court is adjourned.
The time is now 4:56 and a half. I see that.
You guys have a great day. Thanks for coming.